Why do we need the interlocal agreement? Stated differently, if the developer uses a letter of credit as the completion assurance, and we're a coobligee, and he posts it for the benefit of both the special improvement district and the county, what is the interlocal agreement's role in drawing down on the letter of credit? If the improvements aren't completed, don't we have a direct ability to draw down on the letter of credit as a coobligee?
And I think that's where the rub is with, in my opinion, the interlocal agreements at all for purposes of completion assurances. Because we're obligated by state statute and by county code to guarantee certain completion. And, you know, the first interlocal agreements we're talking about, the county shall have, you know, the right but not obligation. And the more we looked into that, we said, well, no, the county is obligated regardless of whether we want to step in as the attorney in fact for the interlocal agreement. And so, from the legal perspective, is I don't see a benefit to the county for doing an interlocal agreement. How it provides more assurance than any of the other options that are provided, and it has yet to be articulated, other than it would be too onerous for the county to be involved all along the way, but that's our job. That's the engineer's job, the county planner's job, the county attorney's job is to be involved along the way, so we don't get to my hypothetical I presented to their attorney earlier today, which is what if eighty percent of the funds have been released and only twenty percent of the work has been done? Now, even as a coobligee, or as an attorney in fact that could step in and remedy it, we're not involved enough to even know what the issues were up to that point, and it puts the county in negative position. And so, from my perspective, you know, and I don't know how county engineer feels, I know Lance said that maybe this is something that we can look at further and bring back for a code amendment in the future, but from my perspective, I'm not convinced that an interlocal agreement is ever appropriate for completion assurances, at least under our code. Although it has been communicated to me that it has been used in other jurisdictions, I just haven't seen the evidence of that to be comfortable to recommend it at this point.
Well, and that's kind of, to a certain degree, what I'm asking, if we're, it's just, when you do your letter of credit, or maybe it's the county that ought to hold the cash escrow, if that's the case, you know, for the benefit of the special improvement district. We hold it and we sign off on the releases just like they do. We may, they may give us first evidence of the need to release, and we may have our engineer confirm it, and then we release under the cash escrow. Same things on draws on the letter of credit, except the letter of credit, you don't do draw, draw down to pay. They pay, they do the work, and then the amount of the letter of credit assuring you that they complete performance in the future is reduced. So we would just be direct, we just wouldn't do it vis a vis the letter of credit route. I don't know if that's problematic. So anyway, sounds like we're thinking about it in the same way, particularly if you believe that the interlocal agreement ends up complicating as opposed to making it more streamlined. I did think that number three looked to me to be more appropriate is E of the section above it. What I don't understand about that is why isn't the cash escrow for the improvements and the landscaping sufficient? Why would you have two? Well, you're doing this under of a letter of credit, but why wouldn't the letter of credit assure both?
I think it would assure both, but I think the cash escrow is, the way I understood it was, it's, that would be posted with the subdivision, much more accessible funds, should they get started and go up. Not as far as the letter of credit. The letter, the cash escrow would be there in case the letter of credit is not completed yet, although it's not what it says, so. It would be just for the vegetation, it would not be any more than that, and it would be quick, easy to access.
Okay. The other provision of this that still just has me scratching my head is A. And I know we're required to do this by the state statute, but, and you included a copy of the state statute. And it says, "A county shall establish a minimum of two acceptable forms of completion And then it says, "If an applicant elects to post an improvement completion assurance, allow the applicant to post an assurance that meets the conditions of this title and any local ordinances." So I take it that we're seeking to impose A as a part of any local ordinances. But I kind of read that provision as qualifying what constitutes an improvement completion assurance, not who constitutes an acceptable developer and who constitutes a credit, a creditworthy institution. To me, a letter of credit's a letter of credit. I completely understand that you want to have a letter of a credit from a viable financial institution. The other part of it just seems to me to be a relatively ambiguous evaluation of who's good and who's bad. And for that reason, I wouldn't, I wouldn't include that portion of it.
That was one of my comments, I don't know if the county treasurer has reviewed this, and if he's good with everything that's been written in here.
Not the latest version, but to that point, yes.
Because when it, when it talks about similar to what Commissioner McConnell said about the financial institution, I'm, what I've seen is it's been more detailed of what that definition is, versus just saying a positive performance, and then the county treasurer approves. Those are kind of the only two requirements, and I, I don't know, I guess a financial institution wouldn't be operational if that doesn't have a positive performance, but I just don't, I don't know what that definition is and how that's defined. So, that'd be my comment anyways, is if there's a better definition of how, of the positive I was, I went into Weber County just a few years after 2008, and there was, I want to say, two or four subdivisions, and we had a tough time, we actually weren't able to recoup those, those bonds. They stayed with the banks that, that went under, and so, I think that's where all of this is coming from, is just a concern and protection to make sure that we're able to get those done correctly, so.
And improvement bonds were much harder to draw the funds on than a letter of credit. And we're not approving an improvement bond mechanism for an improvement completion assurance, just letters of credit. But depending on the language of the letter of credit, and we indicate that it's either on our form or a form approved, there're site draws. And you go in and you say, developer has not performed, I'm giving you my affidavit that they have not performed, and the bank is obligated to give you the cash. That's very different than a completion bond, where the condition to draw upon the bond was likely that the county had to complete the improvements and then request the funds. And half those companies went broke anyway. So, the bonding companies did in '08 and '09. Whereas, a letter of credit is generally supported by money in an account that belongs to the developer, or it's a very strong developer and they do so much business with them, they'll do a letter of credit and just charge them interest like it's a loan for the amount of the letter of credit, as I understand. So those are site draws, and I would think if we were getting letters of credit from any of the major banks, I, you know, you can create a bank fairly easily, and if it's a newly created bank, it's not that easy, but you have to have some capital, but, but it's not super difficult, but, you know, if it's, you know, Zion's or Chase, or Bank of America, or any of those institutions, I'm not going to have a big concern about the letter of credit form, so. Those are my thoughts, but.
Sounds like a start of a definition.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are you suggesting perhaps we say that the bank has to meet a certain criteria, that the financial institution needs to meet a certain criteria? I don't know if they do that in terms of size, or rating, or how that might come about.
Yeah, rating.
Well, you can, you could set a deposit requirement, having deposits of.
Exceeding.
Yeah, exceeding $150 million, or $300 million, or something. Most of the major banks are gonna easily exceed that, so. We could do some looking at that. And then you could give examples, you know, as of today, the following institutions meet this requirement.
Weber County, where we got most of this language, has that list of institutions. We could add it in there as part of this.
And then is your suggestion then Lance, and it sounds like our county attorney's suggestion as well, is that section four we should just remove entirely for the time being, and then keep working towards that?
That, that would be the safest route to go.
Or table it, so that it doesn't have to go through planning commission again, if you feel comfortable, it's just postponed.
That particular section.
That particular section, so that.
And then.
It wouldn't have to start over from square one.
How are you seeking to resolve it then? Are you gonna get the additional information, or the examples?
Yeah, they're, they're pulling together some information. I, I'd just like to see the examples, I think, you know, rather than jumping through saying, well, there are examples, I'd just like to see them first, and maybe I'm too risk averse, but that's, that's my recommendation at this point.
I've done with, one with the cash escrow, where there, the developer deposits the cash, there was a third party that wanted to make sure that they were done. They actually could make the first call once, but they had to complete the improvements, and then they could make the call to complete, and then the bank, but everything was signed off by the city, and then the city had ultimate recourse to the cash if neither of the two were completed. So that's what I was thinking when they were talking about an interlocal agreement, was something like that.
And maybe we could discuss it further and, and look for some options in that jurisdiction, where I could see what their code says.
We did that in Draper. So, does that mean we go ahead and approve this without the number four, for further discussion, or what?
Public might want to speak, but we might open that up.
Yeah, we gotta go to public hearing.
So, this isn't actually a public hearing, so we already had the public hearing for this? We can open it to that though, if there are members who wish to speak, so if that's the case, looks like we've got at least one. And if the commission's okay with that, we'll open it up to public comment for this particular item. So we'll reopen the, the public hearing that we held on this particular item from December 21st.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, to reopen the public hearing from December 21st on this item, proposed amendment to Morgan County Code, section 8-12-37, security requirement for improvements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, we're now in public hearing.
All right, Ed Schultz, Wasatch Peaks. You know, we have been engaging with staff quite a bit on, on this topic. It's something that we've, well, spent a lot of time thinking about, even back into 2019, maybe not under the scope of improvement completion agreements, but, you know, with the creation of our two districts and the ability to create interlocal districts, interlocal agreements, from, from our perspective, you know, we really appreciate the staff's perspective and understand their goal to protect the county. You know, we've created these districts to ultimately be responsible for these improvements, and we just need the, the mechanism to protect the county and create the agreement between the district and the, and the county. And we think the interlocal agreement is the best way to do that, in that it would define, and we've done iterations with staff of, okay, here are the criteria, here are the inspection, here are the, you know, the documentation requirements, say we're putting in a partial release. Well, that, that should go to the county engineer, and X amount of timeframe for him or her to review that in the future, to review that, and then also to say, okay, well, I also want to field verify, or what are my inspection rights? So, the interlocal to us can, can define in the scope all of those documentation, inspection, verification rights, before then we make the release, or the district makes the release. And so that's really our approach in using the, the interlocal agreement. I guess if it was our preference, I understand the, the uncertainty that staff has, we talked about it even up until this afternoon, if we could table it for a further discussion, that would be fine. We'd like to include it if possible, just to, to continue to accelerate this, you know, our efforts that we were working towards in December, to get to our first 50 lots to the plating process. So, if it can be, if you're comfortable enough with it to be general, that would be generalized or formatted in a way that's general enough that we can then define this with the interlocal, that's our intent, but we understand if, if everyone is more comfortable tabling that, we're fine. I think, as written, our, we appreciate the changes to add coobligee, coobligee to also be the, to be the joint, joint beneficiary, define the county in a couple different ways, and then we can expand on that. Our thoughts would be then expanding on that again in the interlocal agreement. The one question that I do have is just as, as written, that the, if an interlocal agreement is used, that it provides a greater security and oversight than the standard escrow. You know, oversight, no problem, that's what we could define in the interlocal, as described, but is, is there a need for greater security? You know, it's kind of the same, everyone else is under the obligations of the code amendment, if there's an interlocal, why is there a greater level of security, and really looking at that in dollar, in a dollar standpoint? So, that was really our one question, so.
Are you planning on doing a cash escrow program, or are you thinking of doing a letter of credit?
Letter of credit. And in fact, we've already formed two, when we were racing for, for year end, we have two letter of credits with Zion's bank. We bank with Zion's bank, and again, the institutional quality is important.
Does Zion's bank have any issues with a coobligee?
We haven't, that language was new since we created the letter of credits with them, so we're waiting to see how the, how the agreements finalize before we put that back in front of Zion's.
So I think we are, I mean, it would be in your interest as well as ours, for you to confirm that they're comfortable with a coobligee and joint approval process.
We will be, yes. Whether this approved, it moves forward tonight or gets tabled, we definitely will. Those are the next calls.
So Ed, can I ask you, how, how is it working now? How are the inspections and reviews and different things working now, without this agreement in place for the roads going up to plot one?
Right now, it's just a, really just open, open book. We have a standing Thursday meeting with staff, county engineer, Lance, and Mark, county planner and engineer are there almost every Thursday when activity's going on, digitally when we've slowed down a little bit with snow. And then Mark, as, as needed with the, with the updates on the construction process, jumps in either with our team or with Whittaker directly, and inspects whatever they're, they've been working on. And that's, right now, it's only water line, and then obviously the roads.
I guess, I guess.
Commissioner, could I address that maybe a little more specifically?
Sure.
So, up, up to this point, we haven't been dealing with subdivision, and as you know, this agreement guarantee is in the subdivision portion of the code. Up to this point, we've been dealing with land use agreements, excavation permits, that sort of thing. So, the code amendment that's before you tonight wouldn't have kicked in until now. And, and I think that's why we're hearing it now, is, oh, they have their first phase that they want to build, much the same as Gardner would be overbuilding some new subdivision right now, correct? And we, we need to put them, you know, they need to conform with the subdivision ordinance, and so.
Up till now.
It hasn't been an issue, because it hasn't been a portion of the subdivision ordinance. Now that we're in phase one with them, we need to get something going, and their preference has been that they hold the money with their land use district, and that we're a coobligee instead of us being in charge of that escrow, letter of credit, or whatever it is, and so. That's, that discussion, but in the meantime, Garrett fortunately picked up on the fact that, hey, we need, the state's obligating us to have these two forms, and that's, setting Wasatch Peaks aside, we at least need to hopefully get those two forms approved, a letter of credit and escrow, and then, you know, if ultimately we end up doing something with an interlocal agreement in the future, that's, that's different. But to answer the question specifically, more to the point, we haven't needed to up till now.
So, the next question I have for you, Ed, you mentioned that you believe this would streamline the, you said streamline the process, I believe is the word you used, and I guess I'm, I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but I guess I'm struggling, it feels like this is gonna actually make it a little more, it's gonna take a while to get through it, if, if we do get through it.
Well, I think I meant outline the process. Really just outline the inspection, the document criteria, all of those. We just want to be clear what, what and when we need to provide, or the district needs to provide for staff to have ample time to review whether they want to conduct inspections. We just need to outline all of those, and we still think the interlocal's the best mechanism for that. Or, if there is a different agreement, I would defer to the, to the legal lines in the room, if there's another process for that, but that was really the approach we looked at it, and it wasn't, it wouldn't streamline it, it's adding another layer, but it's a layer of protection that the county, that, that staff has to provide to the county, and our district has to provide to the members of the district. So we have to have those two entities communicating, and just outlining that process, because there are downstream implications, plat notes on your ownership and responsibilities, what's under the DA, what is then also an obligation of the, of the subdivision ordinance and just as county code, that we are obviously obligated to, to meet those criteria as well.
Something that I did bring up in our discussion earlier today is my worry about the interlocal agreement, is it acts in a loophole, it acts as a loophole in our subdivision code, which already outlines what the engineer has to review before there are releases and so forth. And so, I, I'm not convinced yet, I, I know you say it adds a layer of protection, I just don't know what that layer is yet, because to me, I think it takes away the protection by saying, okay, we'll deal with this in an interlocal agreement, and now we've got a loophole in all of the other subdivision code that requires the engineer to review things before money's are released.
I, I guess the other thought process I have is it sounds like the protection you've been talking about is not necessarily who holds the letter of credit, or escrow, or however that's gonna work. It sounds like it's more on the inspection part. Is that, or am I not?
It is, and I think, I don't think it's, we don't, it, there's the loophole part, and then the responsibility for the dollars. It's, you know, the, the, we found this when we looked at the county ordinance, so, who holds the dollars? We like the letter of credit or surety bonds, right, as developers, because when the county owns the dollar, has the dollars, we actually, depending on the timing of releases, it requires a significant amount of capital on our side. A, we're committing surety with the county, cash only, or another form. B, then we're also paying for those improvements. So we are, depending on the timing, up to double capital allocations, and I think as you guys have seen over the last two years, we're moving as fast as we can, we'd like to have three phases in front of you guys at one point. And so, those dollars then become significant for the capital allocation from the developer standpoint. And I, I don't want to think of it as a loophole, you know, this is the district that ultimately is responsible for all of these improvements. The improvements don't get transferred to the county in the normal process, so, you know, it's that mechanism to protect the district as a government entity, as a governmental entity, it's gonna have taxing authority and all the things, all the responsibilities and rights that a government entity has, but we want to define those and make sure that it's clear that while the county has inspection rights to make sure they're protecting the whole county as a whole, including our, including our residents, ultimately those improvements get transferred to the district and not to the county, as normal process or normal development has been. So that's why we're trying to add this extra layer of complexity in there, and definitely not streamlined.
And, and I think we could handle that, but, but typically, the, so, so the hard part about the current is that the district is the developer right now. Now, that's not gonna be how it is going forward, and in a lot of these local districts, they're formed after the improvements are done, or, or that's kind of typically how it is, and so the county doesn't want to step on their toes either, but we also don't want to be obligated to do certain things without the completion assurance that I guess the county's familiar with at this point, maybe, maybe this is a viable option. But I, I guess I, I still have yet to hear why this is better than the other completion assurances, I haven't heard that articulated, even though I feel like I've asked that quite a few times today.
I think I'd have to bring in a, a better legal mind than my amateur staff to help describe that.
Well, and I think the simple question would be, why would it be better for the county?
Yep.
And what benefits would the county get?
Yeah, it's adding that layer of the district, and I know we are the district, because we have no residents right now, we define the district as our geographic boundaries, it's actually, you know, gives me mild indigestion, because now we have responsibility, I mean, this is a government entity, we have separate, it's a separate entity, emails, we have, you know, fiduciary responsibilities to the district, even though we are the board members, we have to put on that hat, and when we conduct district business, we have to run it through a separate process, and, you know, follow all the, all the district, all the government, you know, public meetings, and all of those, you know, notice requirements. So, it is truly a standalone entity, even though we are members, I just have to put on a different hat, along with other members of our team, and it's not that comfortable, right? I'd rather not have that level of responsibility. We take that responsibility very seriously, because ultimately, the district, again, is getting transferred all of these improvements, these assets, and have requirements to operate those for, for forever. And so, it's a big responsibility in there, and that's why we're adding these extra layers of protection and clarity in there, because of, because of the two hats, so. And I'd like to think, and hopefully our attorney can help describe how that protects the county, that, you know, the, the classic developer who builds some things and leaves, as Morgan and the rest of the world has unfortunately experienced, you know, the district has that ongoing obligation to the county, so acting under that district is, you know, creating those responsibilities for now, for, for the construction of the improvements, and then ultimately the operate, you know, receiving, owning and operating those, along with the ongoing, you know, maintenance and all the associated responsibilities.
So, it's a gap in the statutory scheme, it seems to me, because Garrett, if I understood you earlier, what you were concerned about was the county's responsibility to ensure the proper completion of public improvements.
Well, any, any improvements within our county, that's under the 17-27A-103, the definition.
So if these were private roads?
To, to my understanding, and Lance can probably speak to it more articulately than I can, but regardless of private or public, the county is still guaranteeing completion assurance.
So I've never understood that municipality or county could require a completion assurance for a private road.
And, and so I.
The landscaping, you could.
So maybe Lance can talk to it.
The state code, it is, you gotta have two forms, and then it has to cover improvements. So with more private, anything we require to be put in, water, sewer, roads, we have to make sure it's done right. That's my interpretation of state.
So, okay, so.
And in speaking.
Water, sewer, so those aren't publicly owned necessarily, they're quasi-public entities?
And in speaking with Jeremy Cook, the attorney, earlier today, and I brought that up, he says, well, there is some ambiguity, and my response was, I don't like to deal in ambiguity with the state code, let me deal on the most risk averse, you know, let me do the most protection for the county, and great, rather than fight that legal battle later and defend why we chose to do what we did. So that's more my perspective.
Sure, and I was thinking, gonna say the gap in the statutory scheme is originally the PIDs weren't going to own the improvements. The county was going to own the improvements, and so who would you post the completion assurance with? You would, the county. Then they expanded it to allow the PIDs to own the improvements, but they didn't provide any clarification as to who the completion assurance should be posted with. So that's, that's the gap.
That's probably the ambiguity that you referenced, and.
Yeah, so, but if at the end of the day, we approve this and we appro, uh, uh, we put in two forms of completion assurance, the cash escrow plus a letter of credit.
So that's three, because funds deposited directly with the county treasurer was the previous, so that technically would be three. We only need two, but that would take it up to three.
Well, but, but the only one, okay, when I, when I, I meant cash escrow, I meant deposited with the treasurer. Cause the only other reference to cash escrow is three, which is supposed to be E, which says the cash escrow is deposited with the county treasurer. So it's the same thing, it's just funds deposited with the treasurer.
Do you have the new one from Lance?
Oh, no, maybe not.
So that, Lance clarified E and then added a section three, which is an escrow agreement and escrow account deposited with the county.
Oh, and with a-
With the county approved third party.
Okay.
So, so that would be-
Oh, okay, I didn't even see that.
So that would be the third one.
I'm looking at my screen.
Yeah.
We've gotten a little bit away from public hearing.
Yeah, sorry.
From our public hearing. So, thank you, Ed, I appreciate it and I think this has been a very good discussion. Is there any other members of the public that wish to address the commission regarding this item? If not, I'd look for a motion to move out of the public hearing.
I move that we, I move that we go out of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Fackrell and a commissioner, or second from Commissioner Wilson to move out of public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So now we're back with item number two, continuation of our discussion, public hearing decision for amendments to Morgan County Code, section eight dash twelve dash thirty-seven. Okay, so what we have before us, the current iteration is the printed iteration that Lance handed out today. It sounds like we've got a couple of questions about number four specifically. This is under section C, number four, the interlocal agreement. So I think perhaps we look at this in two different areas. Maybe we look at the first three sections and the rest of the changes, see if we're comfortable with those and then we can talk about number four separately. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
As long as Garrett agrees. He's the one that has to defend it.
Exactly. Okay, so, looking at items, so under, first of all, let's talk about the, in general, under this section, sections A and B, are there any comments or questions or concerns about the changes made there? It looks like most all of these are just changes from council to commission. Okay, seeing no questions on those, let's go to item C and we'll focus on items, under item C, numbers one, two and three. Any questions or comments or changes that you feel like ought to be made to those sections? And Lance and Garrett, are you both comfortable with those two sections, or those three sections?
It was, it was brought up earlier on the two B. The applicant's financial institution has a history of positive performance and then it was also discussed, the hundred and fifty million or three hundred million, whatever that might be. And I don't know if we know off the top of our head. And is that adjusted for inflation? I don't know. But, you know, that might be a consideration rather, I think Commissioner McConnell's worry was that it doesn't really define what makes a financial institution having a positive, history of positive performance and so maybe that could be more clarified.
It certainly could be more clarified. So, I, before I actually said, I'm throwing, I'm pulling numbers out of the air when I say, make them, when that, so I don't, I think what would be advisable would be to, to look at the main financial institutions within the state and establish a number of, you know, minimum deposits of, and, and, but I don't, I'm not comfortable setting that number, just pulling it out of the air.
I guess the question is, is a dollar amount the way to go? I mean, is there another way?
Or you could, or you could do the list of institutions.
Where they have that list, I would think that would be the easiest route.
That would be the easiest route.
And we're not worried about that dollar amount becoming obsolete down the road?
And I, I believe Weaver County did quite a bit of work to get that list.
Yes, they did.
My understanding.
I imagine it did. So would it be reasonable to, for us to adopt this, including the list that's currently listed on Weaver County's section?
Well, or-
That it wouldn't go under code. It would go under code.
Yeah, be in the code and be part of this, this list.
Because, okay.
Financial institution as listed in the current Morgan County Treasurer's approval is the most-
That might be better.
Okay, that's true and then, then he could take that list and put it in his-
Yeah.
Yeah, and he could give that out as people ask for it. What are the, what's the list? Here's your list.
Somebody wants to get out into the list? Great, don't make a vote, great.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
So you could just say the applicant's financial institution has been approved by Morgan County and then just have like a reference to a list maintained by the county treasurer?
What do you think, Garrett?
I would probably get with Zach and say, let's develop criteria for what gets on this list and, and it would just be one more section removed. I think everything we do should have a position that can be articulated persuasively, so if that's what it would take, I would probably just work with Zach to say, how are you, what is your criteria? How do they get on the list? And we could, we could do that for sure.
I would say that could be policy, not code.
Right, yeah, that could be-
And we have a policy for-
Policy within the treasurer's office.
So, okay.
And in application process, if, if there is an institution that's not on the list that would like to be added, then they could go through the application process. Or if an institution that historically has been really excellent declares bankruptcy or I don't know, something happens where they fail, then they could be removed.
Well, and to a certain degree, you pick that up in D, because notwithstanding the fact that I'm not particularly comfortable with A, it says they approve the letter of credit, the county attorney, county treasurer, county engineer, unless they have objective indications of a substantial risk that are either the applicant or the applicant's financial institution will not fulfill its obligations related to the completion of the improvements or the financial guarantee. So if, you know, they, they bring in XYZ Bank and you know that XYZ Bank filed for bankruptcy two weeks earlier, then you have reasonable objective evidence to reject, even though they're on the list.
Right.
Okay, so do we want to write that, that language up?
So, this is-
I'm guessing that that needs to be restated for our transcriptionist here. So we're in section-
So-
C two B.
And what I would propose is that it be modified to read, the applicant's financial institution has been approved by the Morgan County Treasurer and Morgan County Attorney and then, and that's all it says, has been approved by the Morgan County Treasurer and Morgan County Attorney. And then I think you would simply include a note or in the application form, indicate that approved financial institutions are, you, you can get a list from the Morgan County Treasurer. And if somebody wants to be added to the list, then based on the criteria you guys have discussed, they can be added to the list.
Okay, any other adjustments to section two? To section three?
Same change to B as well.
Yeah.
It does mirror.
Okay, so under section three B, we would update that to be the same as the update that we just made to two, section two B.
So in three E, that means they need to put a cash escrow in with the county or is it just the letter of credit, seeing there's the money there?
My understanding is that for the, and Lance, correct me if I'm wrong, for the revegetation, it does require a cash escrow.
It requires a separate little cash escrow requirement for revegetation.
Okay.
It requires a separate one?
I think so.
Okay. So, I have, I'm sorry, you asked about this, but I'm, I'm looking at part B now. So it says, prior to signing the final flat by the county engineer and the others, the subdivider shall enter into an improvements guarantee acceptable to the county as completion assurance to ensure completion of all improvements required to be installed in the subdivision. So, and then we talk in B one about a subdivider's agreement. So is it, we're requiring the applicant to enter into the subdivider's agreement, right? A completion agreement. In addition to the completion agreement, we're requiring them to post a completion assurance in one of the three forms that we've identified. So, this paragraph needs to be modified too.
Which one, B one?
Yeah, an improvement completion agreement. Strike guarantee acceptable to the county to ensure completion of all improvements required to be installed in the subdivision, the completion agreement. So being a form approved by the county attorney.
Just wanted to rewrite it all.
Signing on behalf of the county by the commission and we can, subdivider, okay. Or do you prefer subdivider's agreement or just a completion agreement? Or an improvements completion agreement?
So I think in subsection one, it's not necessarily talking about a written agreement, it's just saying the subdivider is agreeing to complete all improvement and maybe we could just-
Yeah, but I think when we do the completion, the, the completion improvements agreement, don't we include a timeframe for completion of the improvements?
Yeah, it's here as well, octo, that's the chapter, octo time.
Right, and Garrett's point is, can we just leave it in the code or do we include it in the text of the agreement itself?
Well, but this says it will, it will be not to exceed twenty-four months and we will put the timeline in on the improvements, but not to exceed twenty-four months.
So, so then my, my question is, do you, do you wanna call these subdivider's agreement or improvements completions agreement, or what do you wanna call these things? Cause I want it to be the same throughout the, the code.
So the point I was making is I think the subdivider's agreement isn't talking about a written agreement, it's just saying that the subdivider is agreeing to complete all improvements within that time.
So why doesn't it say the subdivider agrees to complete all?
Well, because, I see what he's saying, cause the, the end of B says, the agreement shall include but not limited, be limited to the subdivider's agreement.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
The subdivider, that's, okay, that's the, now, the true improvement.
Subdividers can set.
Yeah.
The improvement shall be completed to the subdivider. In three, it says a provision that the improvements guarantee amount of deposit shall be equal to, shouldn't we just change that to be the completion assurance shall be equal to? The improvements completion insurance shall be equal to one hundred and ten percent of the county engineer's estimate? Do you wanna use the term from the state statute consistently?
Yes.
So it's, it's, the state statute refers to it as the improvements completion assurance, not just completion assurance. I shorthand it all the time, but subdivision sort of violates the improvement agreement. And here we call it the improvements agreement at the end. In five, it says that deposited funds may only be reduced, so should that be the improvement completion assurance there? B five?
Yes, the deposited funds, just completion assurance, cause it may not be deposited funds.
That's really reduced as they complete portions of it. Why would it be reduced during the completion of it instead of just waiting to the end?
Cause as they complete work, I mean, if you're stretching out your work over nine months, then they draw down, if it's a cash escrow on a monthly basis or as system components are completed.
The only thing I'm, I'm curious about is on that, is I've seen a lot of developers that go in and they'll have it completed, it'll look nice and then all of a sudden they say, oops, that's not, I mean, I've gotta go back in and it basically destroys everything they've had done. Now who's obligated then to finish them, to go back in and revegetate or do whatever they need to?
Well, you usually only reduce, you hold back and so you don't reduce the final amount until you're complete and you go into warranty.
Okay.
And, and then that amount's held for the entire warranty period. You were going to say something.
So are you saying at the beginning of B, we change the deposited funds to the completion assurance?
The improvements completion assurance.
And we're not gonna reduce the improved, we're not reducing that. We're reducing the deposited funds, they get deposited funds back with the assurance agreement, the completion, improvements completion assurance. I guess it's the same thing, but it's a little, we're not saying that.
Assurance isn't the agreement. No, the assurance is the, is the potential either funds or letter of credit, which could be reduced, right?
Well, they may not be deposited funds.
Yeah, that, that's the key.
Yeah, you've got three different forms, you've got three different forms.
So the assurance is just whatever form they choose, right?
And that change was made above in four, so I think it's, I think it's consistent to make the change in five.
Okay, so have we gotten all of the updates that were made?
I'm gonna be free to listen to them.
Okay, okay.
I've got a lot here.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments on any of these items? A, B or C? And then, I guess the last item we need to discuss is item number four and how you'd like to proceed on item number four, or section number four, I should say. We want to hold that out for now?
I would say hold it out for now, until we know-
I think you need to for the benefit of the attorney to finalize it with their attorney.
Yeah. And what I would suggest, just, so, a lot of times I'm asking the why- And what I would suggest, just, so a lot of times that I'm asking the why, I get a how answer, and so maybe I can drill that down. And then, rather than leave it up to the interlocal agreement, I'm asking for some direction from the commission. Why not have something that says, you know, rather than defining what needs to be done in an interlocal agreement, say, the interlocal agreement shall provide at least the following, so that we have some criteria within the code, so that a developer who may not be as pleasant to work with in the future doesn't come back and say, well, you did this for so and so, so we have minimum standards to bring back, so it is more well-defined. I don't know if you like that, or if you just say whatever, whatever other jurisdictions do. Or I could do a little of both, I guess.
Yeah, I, you know, my understanding is they're, it's not that they're doing a bad job of constructing. They have multiple agencies that are doing inspections constantly. So I don't think the issue is necessarily that they're doing their job correctly, that things are being constructed correctly. So I, you know, whatever we can work through on that, and if that, at the very least, in agreement with how things are being inspected, I, I think would be extremely beneficial for the county. But I know that's not all the concerns, so.
Who are you referring to when you said pleasant?
Well, Ed, you know? Ed's been very pleasant, and, and we.
For the record, for the record.
Yeah, no, we, we've had good discussion, and I want to keep that going, and, but I've been very open with Ed that just because you do it some way, doesn't mean that the next one does, and we're setting a precedent, and so I want to just make sure we're tightening it up, not just for Ed, but for, not Ed, whoever comes next.
So the, the one other thing I'd add is just, I, I would look at whether or not a, if there's a cash escrow form of improvement completion assurance or a letter of credit, if we're the co-obligee or dual beneficiary within equal consent right or a joint consent right to sign off on the improvements, I think you can drop the interlocal agreement altogether. You just require as part of their, the execution of the bond, that they do the completion agreement, just like anybody else. It runs to the benefit of both the county and the district, and they post a completion assurance that runs to the benefit of both the county and the district, and requires both to sign off on, drawdowns on that completion assurance. That seems like the simplest way to address it and provide us the same protections we're afforded in any other situation, assuming it works.
Okay.
Okay. I'll look for a motion then with that. For Morgan County Code, section eight dash twelve dash thirty-seven, completion assurance for required improvements.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. That we approve the proposed modifications to section eight dash twelve dash thirty-seven of the Morgan County Code, completion assurance for required improvements in the form presented at the meeting on January 18th, 2021, no, 2022. With the following modifications, in subsection B. Should I just read the, I'll just read the paragraph. It'll be stated as follows. Prior to signing of a final plat by the county engineer, comma, county attorney, comma, county clerk, and county commission chairperson, the subdivider shall enter into a completion agreement acceptable to the county.
Improvement completion agreement, because you wanted it to be with?
Well, you want, you want, I, I can say that, improvement completion agreement?
I just didn't hear improvement, so.
Okay, an improvement completion agreement acceptable to the county, ensuring completion of all improvements required to be installed in the subdivision. And Julie, I'll give you these messy notes when I leave, and you may have to call it. The improvement completion agreement shall be in a form approved by the county attorney, shall be signed on behalf of the county by the county commission chairperson, and may contain, may contain specific provisions approved by the county attorney. The improvement completion agreement shall include but not be limited to, and there's no change in one. There's no change in two. But in three, a provision requiring an improvement completion assurance equal to 110% of the county engineer's estimated cost of the improvements to be installed. Item four, the county shall have direct access to the improvement completion assurance when necessary to remedy a deficiency in required subdivision improvements or a violation of the improvement completion agreement. Number five. That the improvement completion assurance, that's just the change in the first sentence, instead of the deposited funds, the improvement completion assurance. And in the, the last sentence, no improvement completions assurance shall be reduced, as opposed to deposited funds. No change in six, seven, eight, or nine. Now I'm in sub, I'm in part C. I would amend subsection two to delete subpart A. And change B to read, the applicant's financial institution has been approved by the Morgan County Treasurer and Morgan County Attorney, period. In part three, I would delete subpart A. And modify B to read, the applicant's financial institution has been approved by the Morgan County Treasurer and Morgan County Attorney. And I will defer a decision, and I would move to defer the decision on subpart four until a future meeting when it's brought back by the planning department.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, lengthy motion, then a second by Commissioner McCallum. A second by Commissioner McCallum.
I think you should repeat it.
I'm not going to even try to repeat it.
I'm not.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in close in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number three. George Sousa, discussion decision on status of airport infrastructure project and items requiring completion, request signatures and payments for approved items.
I know how this goes. Can I move, we take a short break?
You sure can. Let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 35 hours.
You only have three hours left. I'm serious.
Let's make a copy, two copies, one for, yeah, you'll probably have to call me.
I'm sorry, my, we can't wait three hours before I gotta leave. Or hope that, hope that this lasts. Or I call, if you think it's going to be longer, I'll call and get another one sent.
I think, I think. Well, you can, so your items basically postpart, right?
One of them is going to be postpart, the DMO.
And the other one should be a fairly quick discussion.
Yeah. So then Garrett's got some big questions on it, so.
On which, on the?
On the grant proposals.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that one might take some time.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to discuss the DMO and see if there's any adjustments to that before we go postpart. Because I got a thing from Trace, and I just said, we're not ready.
I am concerned that perhaps we need to do an RFP and let, and bid for the RFP.
That's what I'm giving order.
So that may be something we need to discuss, but that should be a quick discussion. You're back online?
Back online, and it feels good. Oh, it does. When I start coughing and I start getting a little woozy at the head, then it's really time. But yeah, I would like to have just a small discussion on it, just to make sure that.
That's fine.
We got everybody else's opinions here before we move forward with trying to figure out what we want to do. Because we do have applicants that would like to. Okay, we're on again. Hey, Matt, you can't make a little one, did you know? I say you can't make this one.
I was just going to tell George to keep it in her public comment.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, because right now I'm just getting back up to.
Want me to crank up your oxygen for you? Start compressions?
If we start doing that, then I'm not, you guys are going to have to stop for two hours. Because this tank is only going to last three. Okay, I'm fine again.
You start leaning over and stuff, like looking at Jared, and I'm like, I'll turn up the tank, you start compressions.
Something like that. Hey, Jared. Yeah, Joe.
There's so much crap going around.
Something to do with COVID.
But leaving free air.
Week and a half ago, it was a deep, it was actually, five days ago.
That's the wrong one. I'll just give Jared one later. Sorry for being so late on Christmas.
Oh, thank you.
Seriously.
That's great, thank you.
Way late this year.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I love a good sweatshirt.
You did get one. I thought I grabbed, I thought I grabbed my Wilson one, and I grabbed a Benjamin one, so I'll bring you a Wilson's. I don't want you wearing Benjamin. No, that's what I carry, Benjamin, but I want my name on it, too. I mean, I don't just give gifts, because I like it, I give it to you, so you can. I feel more comfortable in a dog in you, especially where you have a cage and a tree.
I, you know, I didn't really, so I was like, the sun. So have we advertised for that position?
We discussed this two weeks ago, didn't we?
Yeah, and I don't know if we advertised it, and it wasn't on the agenda for tonight, so I don't know if we had advertised and got.
We still got a lot to go over. Okay, so right here, on this, this area. So these three here, there is no runway for.
Did you see it?
Planes to get out into the rain, runway here, where the tanks, what happens there.
The actual.
This hangar road is responsible for putting. It's like this. I thought we were paying for it all. No, we're only paying for the infrastructure. We're paying for the infrastructure.
Thank you.
We trust you.
Garrett? Garrett, do you have a second? I noticed on the.
If this is where Georgia's at, or where your, your. So then this one here is. It has been? Yes, it's been, was put in here to the, and then these six people.
So do you feel like we can just cross those? I mean, cross those.
And so now.
No doubt.
Please, this road. So our infrastructure is up here. For these, I've.
You know you can't retire.
Yeah, well, that day will come.
There has to be, there has to be a land attorney on here. You'll have to find someone to replace you.
Yeah, land attorney.
Qualifications.
Okay, we're going to reconvene our meeting. Go ahead and ask the members of public to take your seat if you are able, and we'll go ahead and get started here. Mr. Sousa, I know you've got a lot to go through here. We've got a list here. Let's keep this as concise as possible, so let's focus on the action items that you need from the commission and approvals that you need, so we can get those done and report.
So George Sousa, chairman of the airport advisory board, and I want to start off with a few things that I'm unsure of right now. I think I just got word from Commissioner Anderson on the information that was requested from the engineers, so we have that. As far as the path going forward, I think I have a good idea of what may happen. I don't know that it's been decided yet, so I'm going to leave that for now. There's another sub-bullet under there, you can read that to yourselves, that may not be a good idea, which is something that was mentioned to me, so I'll skip over that. Let's see, the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District is going to be an issue right now, so. The board chairman called me today, and we spoke, and I don't know that I fully understood what he had to say. He seemed to contradict himself a few times. So, but we did miss the January 5th meeting to get our application and the bond waiver letter and the plat before them on the 5th. It was not our fault, it was that the previous manager designed it, didn't pass on the information. So they'll first look at it now on February 2nd. And from what I gathered today, they want somebody to authorize sending a stamped plat to Sunrise Engineering for review. They have to do that at some point during the process. And they also want a letter draft. He said he wanted a letter drafted by the county attorney, assuring that the county accepts financial responsibility if we're not going to have a bond requirement for, for Dell.
Okay, for the improvements themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The, the new news thing, he mentioned a will serve letter, that was the first that I had heard of it. And so I would recommend that we have for them by February 2nd, the payment, the final plat, which needs a stamp, an engineer's stamp, they have the application, and we either modify the existing bond waiver letter, or we draft a new one that adds the financial responsibility acceptance by the county. So. If that sounds like a good way forward with Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District, I'll, I'll pursue it along those lines.
Get this thing done.
We already have financial responsibility. We're the ones completing the improvements.
Right.
If we need to add that to the letter, let's add it to the letter.
Right.
I don't care who drafts it.
Just get it done.
We'll have George. Just kidding. I can draft that.
So in terms of the dollar amount, we've already, we've already agreed to these dollar amounts. It looks like there are some slight adjustments. And we had, we already agreed to the dollar amount for the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. And we had, we already agreed to the dollar amount for the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. So, we just need to know that exact dollar amount, it needs to go to the county recorder so that she can get a, a check cut.
Recorder?
Sorry, not recorder.
Even treasure.
Thank you. So, if, if you can get that information over to her, I think that'll be fine, I don't-
Which amounts are we talking about?
So, we're talking about the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District deposit amount.
Okay.
Which is already on here, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-three seventy-six.
Yes.
And then, it looks like you've noted that we've got, well, we have the agreements before us for Dominion Energy. There was an adjustment in the cost on that one, which we knew was coming. Um, so is the sixteen seven eighty-seven the correct amount? The agreement shows fourteen.
By forty-nine.
By forty-nine.
So, I handed out one other copy of the new agreement that goes up to sixteen seven eighty-seven ninety, and I have a second copy of it here. So, it's the same, exact same agreement?
It's just the new dollar amount.
A new dollar amount, I just got it this morning.
Okay. All right, so that one you need approval on the agreement and the dollar amount, so we can get it signed tonight and you can-
Yes.
Turn that.
Yes, please.
And then, on the Rocky Mountain Power, it's still the same amount, although I noticed on the, on the paper you've got twenty-four seven twenty-five, but on the agreement itself, it lists twenty-two nine thirty.
The, this paper is where you see twenty-four seven twenty-five?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that includes what's, what they've already done, the seventeen ninety-five.
Okay. So, what we're agreeing to tonight though would be the twenty-two nine thirty.
Correct.
That's on the agreement.
Correct.
So, the agreement in our packet is correct.
Correct, although there's two options on that agreement, and I'm not sure which would be the better option. On page one, there's a refund option and a contract administration credit option. I have used the higher dollar amount, twenty-two nine thirty. There's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar contract administration credit option that would give us two-hundred-and-fifty dollars back.
So, that's, if, if somebody else connects onto those lines down the road.
Right.
I don't foresee that happening, you know, connecting into our airport infrastructure, I don't know if any of you do, but-
And I know about nine line, and we all know about nine line. What part of that might be considered shared lines, if that's what I would-
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah, because there're gonna be more there. Gotta pay-
So, we probably ought to go with the refund option, the first one.
Okay.
If there's potential for them to, I mean, if nobody connects on, it costs us an extra two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, as I understand it. If somebody does connect on, we could get a partial refund for part of their costs.
Okay, so-
So, so we just need something from them that, I mean, we've got it in here, but all we've gotta do is have it signed and delivered from the clerk, basically, the checks.
Yeah, so, so we need, I would suggest while we're at this point, let's make motions on these two agreements, so we can get them off our plate here. We'll get them signed tonight, we can submit them for payment, and then you can get that all submitted in. Okay.
Yeah.
So, before we move on, while we're talking about that, does anybody have any questions on these agreements? Garrett, have you had a chance to review the agreement?
Yeah, and, and the Rocky Mountain is the same one that came before us, that we reviewed before it expired, so it, it is the same form.
And Dominion Energy is the same thing, it's just we've got a new dollar amount because costs are climbing. Okay, so that being the case, um, if nobody has any comments on the agreements, I'd look for a motion to approve these agreements.
I move that we approve these agreements and go forward with both of them, get it done.
I'll second on the assumption that he's talking about the Dominion Energy gas line installation agreement and the amount of sixteen thousand seven eighty-seven ninety, and the Rocky Mountain Power electrical agreement and the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
That's exactly right, thank you, Robert.
Motion, a second, to approve agreements, uh, for airport infrastructure with Dominion Energy, uh, in the amount of- sixteen seven eighty-seven ninety, and with Rocky Mountain Power in the amount of twenty-two nine thirty. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So, those two agreements are approved, and we'll, we'll take payment.
Then we need to do the Mountain Green one, don't we?
So, the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District, as I recall, we already approved that.
We did.
Okay.
And we approved the dollar amount and the, the agreement, correct? Actually, there wasn't an agreement, was there? It was just a-
Just a-
Just an application, which we already-
We submitted a bond waiver letter that they would like to be stronger, and I think we, um, decided that we would just, I don't know if we decided this or not, I can't remember, but just adding it to the current letter, and I agree with that, I, I, that's what I would recommend, rather than writing a whole new letter that says the county accepts financial responsibility for the project.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a project on our property.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a given that we're ex-
So, um, Garrett, will you make that modification, and then, it may have, I know I signed it without it, um, Commissioner Newton, maybe if you approve the language, we might need to get it re-signed, is on.
I'll, we had talked about this a little bit earlier today, and it may just be a phone call and I can explain, okay, it's on county property, you know, do you still need it? It seemed like there might have been a little questioning in the discussion that he had with George today too, so it may just be a phone call clarification.
Okay, so we don't have to have any kind of a-
Motion.
Motion on any of that? Okay.
Okay, the one item I am concerned about is somebody authorizing, sending stamped plans, and they're not yet stamped, that I know of, to Sunrise Engineering for review. And I would've thought that, and I asked this question specifically at the chairman of the board, that wouldn't they submit the plans once they had the application fee and the application, um, and he said, "No, that can be done now," um, somebody has to authorize it. I, I don't understand how it works.
This is for the sewer improvement districts engineer to review the plans.
The sewer improvement districts engineer is Sunrise Engineering.
Correct.
And yes, so they, somebody needs to send, authorize sending the plans to them, so that somebody at Sunrise can review them for accuracy.
Has Washa Civil, they're, they've stamped their design?
Not, not that I've noticed, I've looked and I don't see a stamp on it.
Okay.
You have?
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the stamping of our approved plans and the submission to the sewer districts, so they can be reviewed by Sunrise Engineering.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McConnell, a second by Commissioner Fackrell, to authorize the stamping of our engineered plans and, uh, sending of those plans to the sewer improvement district for their review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
So, as far as doing the sending, is that Washa Civil that will send them, or is that something you want me to do?
So, I think alls we need to do, if, if you can get George a stamped set of the plans, then I think if you can deliver them to the sewer district, then they can interact with Sunrise Engineering.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, I did confirm that all three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand had been received and, um, deposited in county accounts. It came later today, I've spoken with Wardell, they said that delays into early February are okay. You have packets that have information, some of which we've already talked about, the, uh, oh, on the change order, yes, it doesn't have the, uh, the back is good, the total amount is fine, but the front does not have the description for item twenty-one, which is the three additional curb stop bounds with box and lid. Does that need to be there? I think so, but-
Yep, can't they just add that?
I think so. Okay. Let's move on from there then. The P U E, you have a copy of that in front of you, that's required by Dominion Energy, and I believe Lance has looked at it and said, you know, that's something that has to be approved by the county commission and then reported, so, isn't that what you said? The P U E offered a gas company?
Yeah, well, it has to be approved by the county attorney and then signed by the county commission, not approved by us, so-
And I've looked at it and it appears in order.
Looks like an easement.
It, it, yeah, it is an easement, it, it has a meets and bounds description, which I, in my knowledge, I, I wouldn't be able to describe that, but it appears to be referencing this twenty-foot, um, let's see, yeah, twenty-foot wide public utility easement.
Okay, so Lance, do we need to approve that easement as a land use site, or how does that work?
No, you're the property owner, you're making a, my understanding-
Oh, okay, so this is not a, this is not a action item for the commission, this is a, as a property owner, we're signing this saying this is what we're agreeing to.
Right, it's not part of a plat.
Okay, so, I do feel like we probably ought to have an official motion that we all agree that this public utility easement is acceptable as the property owner.
So moved.
We have a motion, my Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
And a second, my Commissioner Wilson, uh, that we agree that the public utility easement, as outlined for the airport infrastructure, is acceptable as the property owner. Uh, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, then I can take that to the reporter for recording.
It has to be executed and notary has to, you'll, it has to be notarized, signature, so, once it's executed, and then we can take care of the recording.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just take it and give it approval. So, Garrett, will you, well, you've already reviewed it, I guess. I assume I just have to get it then signed and notarized?
We'll probably have to do a- Yeah, I, I mean, there isn't something, so we'll attach the exhibit to a, a transfer document where, or, I don't know, I'll, I'll look into that, I'm sure with Lance and I, we can figure that out pretty quick, right Lance?
This is, this is a little out of our normal territory, because we're usually talking about somebody else's property.
Right. But I, I can follow up with that and then get something ready to, to sign, and then you can come in, get it notarized, and we can record it.
Okay, perfect.
The next item we've already talked about, um, Wardell contract comes right out of, out of the bid book, I modified it with the bid tabulation costs that I think about because of the bidding that Wardell did, so it's updated, um, but it's just a suggested contract at this time, because I think it probably should come from the engineers, the, the actual contract, uh, with Wardell, I, I don't know how to handle that. I, I've done it just to get ahead, just in case it comes from us.
So, this, this did come from the engineers initially, it just didn't have the actual unit prices included, and it still cites to their general conditions that I've reviewed in the past as well, is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, so we have, if architects have AIA standards, we have EJ CDC, Engineering Joint Contract Document Committee documents, and that is a contract from that committee, so it's a, uh, nationally recognized industry standard contract for this type of budget.
And it was approved at a prior commission meeting earlier on, we just didn't have all these numbers, so George put those in for us, and I think, so, in my estimation, it's already been approved, but it probably wouldn't hurt to approve it as is and as was, um, I sent a redline copy earlier today in response to George's email that just put in a few commas to make, to make it a little easier to read with the numbers in the thousands. Um, and then I changed it from Morgan County Airport to just Morgan County, because the airport isn't an entity to enter the agreement, so just a few things like that, but nothing material from what was in the packet originally.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to approve the agreement as, as amended?
As amended.
What's in the packet plus your revision, so the agreement is amended. And this is the agreement between Morgan County and Wardell Brothers Construction for the actual work.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the contract between Morgan County and Wardell Brothers Construction in the form included in the packet with the modifications discussed and recommended by the county attorney.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, my Commissioner McConnell, and a second by Commissioner Fackrell, to approve the agreement between Morgan County and Wardell Brothers Construction, um, for infrastructure improvements at the Morgan County Airport. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, next item, we're working on this, we have talked to DD five and DD six owners, and we have the details of an agreement that they would agree to, we just need to put it in writing and, um, have it approved for signatures, and we'll hope to have that by next week, maybe two days. Uh, let's see, regarding the wider hangars, so, um, we did have a vote on it, we discussed it, uh, we have specific requests, these, these two gentlemen, um, picked these hangars because they knew there was room to make them a little bit wider, so one wants to go another ten feet wider, one wants to go twenty feet wider. Uh, we discussed it at the airport advisory board last week, we conducted a vote, and it passed, uh, four to one, uh, in favor of recommending to you that, uh, at some point we approve them. Uh, I don't know that you necessarily have to do it now, but I would ask that if you think you're not going to approve it, you let me know now, so that I can start talking to the individuals involved, um, if there's a small chance that they may not participate because of that, I don't think that's the case, but I, I would feel better letting them know right away if the county didn't take it as what I needed to make, to allow them to have wider hangars.
I have a question on it. What's their reasoning for having to have that, that's number one. Number two is, is a year ago, before we were involved, there was a, you had requested that everything stayed the same, same height, same width, same, you know, all that kinda stuff, so now you want to change it.
So, it was mostly the height that we wanted to keep the same? Uh, if you remember, uh, the lawyer wanted a very tall hangar, he also wanted it quite a bit wider, and I think he was talking in close to ninety feet by seventy feet, and right there across the street from the homes along Willow Creek Drive, and I, we felt that that was not a good place for that, we felt that we had to put some limitations in the code, um, and, and that's why we have a twenty-seven foot height limit. Uh, there have been some hangars that have come close to that, but they haven't exceeded it, and these ones won't be allowed to exceed it either, they'll have to have a gentler sloped roof, um, but they'll be a little bit wider. Uh, one individual wants to do it because he has gliders, and he'd like to be able to get the glider in his airplane without taking the wings off. The other individual hasn't, hasn't told us specifically, uh, but he'd like a side door, uh, entrance way, and, and he's on the end of the row where he can do that as well. Um, so I don't know what his logic is, I just presume he wants to have a bigger hangar for more airplanes, maybe more lease income, sub, subletting his space out to others, I don't know.
We buy a bigger airplane.
We buy a bigger airplane, don't we?
So, smaller wings, so it'd be, is that have a few feet on each side? Or like, or five feet on each side for your airplane? Well, basically, the, you know, one, you get a, a larger.
So, so because of that, I mean, um, I don't remember your name.
Michelle.
Michelle. Michelle mentioned that, that something to do with, um, the, the aviation way and it, I don't know, beautification, I don't know. Can you kind of explain that, even though my oxygen's going down quick?
So, she, she talked about an agreement with Mike Daffod, which I haven't seen yet, um, I presume that she just got it, or she was giving me a copy of it.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just kinda curious why not. I mean, to me, hey, that's a little bit more square footage for us to get, to get more money to take care of this airport. I mean, to me, hey, that's a little bit more square footage for us to get, to get more money to take care of this airport.
Yes, it's only hundred ninety dollars per year and that's a big difference. He wants to put a glider in, but it doesn't say that he can't put multiple planes in there, which I think is a safety issue for the housing around it. It just ups the possibility that there was longer. The more planes we get there, the higher percentage we could have an accident. Hopefully never will, but we have so many planes there comparatively to airport size. It's just, and, and by making it, I knew it from forty to fifty to an eighty, sixty by eighty, that is almost double on one side, that is double. And he might want to put a glider in, he might want to put a few planes in. They do sell gliders with, that were hidden inside of the minutes now. And I think it always continues to grow, grow, grow. There are stipulations on what this size should have been and we just continue to increase those. But a, as far as they might back out, there's a huge rating risk for people-
I know there is.
That still want them. We're, we're one of the most expensive, which is why a lot of people come up to us. And, and that's even a concern there. We don't have money to put a berm, but yet we want to have more money to get more in those more destruction.
Because, I mean, everything I've seen is, is we're basically maxed out or almost maxed out at this airport. And to me, if I can get, it's just me, if I can get more revenue out of our property, I would like more revenue as long as it does not affect the safety welfare of the county.
And, and I think the safety welfare is there and I also think it's just a good neighboring thing too. I, I, I think, and George, you've done a ton of work. And I, I think as far as developing the airport, I think there's a limit on what it should be. And I think we're just continuing, continuing to push that limit. And the difference of two hundred dollars a year for the county this time is-
Well, that's two hundred, that's two hundred dollars in lease, but then we also have our property taxes. And that's-
And I'm sure that's just a percentage.
Right. All I know is to pay for the airport and everything we do in the airport, it's got to come from the airport. It's not coming from us tax, taxpayers that are on flyers.
To look at the numbers financially, to see the revenue that's being brought in and what's being paid out for the airport, to kind of see where we are on that, to make sure that it's, um... I'm just, I think the airport one is kind of looking into that information to see about where the funds are going, back into the airport, to general fund, we just give the information on that too. But, but I, as a community member that lives very close to the airport and what was promised by the county as far as the berm goals that should have been up, that it's just never happened. It was attempted and it was done so poorly that it didn't last. It's a fire hazard, how it is now. There's just a lot of issues with it, but I think continuing to fit bigger hangars, more airplanes there is a lot.
So is your beef with the, with the berm or the size of the hangars?
I, I think it's two different issues.
I agree.
Yeah.
But you brought up the berm again, so I'm just, when we're talking about the size, so.
Right, two different issues.
Okay.
I mean, my biggest problem with the whole thing is, is here we need revenue to take care of the airport because we're not bringing in enough revenue from the airport yet. And the monies that we receive have to go back into the airport. And this berm and the size of the hangars, I mean, we ought to be trying to generate whatever we can get to be able to take care of the airport. I personally would like to see it beautified, but, but we don't have the money yet to do that. And so now we've got a fire hazard, we're going to have to, you know, there's a lot of things we need to do, but I just want to see us do what's right, but also not, shouldn't say this, but I don't want to hurt the public. I changed the word.
As far as the expenditures and the revenue on the twenty twenty, it looks like, and I, this is just me looking briefly online. This is not actually getting the paper yet from the clerk, which I'm waiting on. She said that I should have it by next week. But in twenty twenty, it looks like we, there was seventy that was bought and only thirty two that was spent. And so there was an amount of that that went to general fund. I could be completely off on these numbers and not try and wanting to get-
Okay, so I, I'm going to stop this for a minute because we got way off in left field here. We got to re-center and come back to this. Well, I appreciate the discussion. I think it's probably a discussion better had outside of the commission meeting. There's certainly a debate on revenues and what's considered airport revenue and what's considered lease revenue on a building that we own, which is a big part of that. So there's a lot to this discussion. I want to refocus us here. What we're talking about is the added infrastructure and, and the question before us is the larger hangars.
Right.
I, I, and I'll give my opinion, then I think everybody else can give their opinion and then we'll, we'll go from there. I, I was around, I wasn't on the commission, I was on the planning commission when there was an issue with a hangar at the airport. You know what I'm talking about. And that hangar did not conform to the sizes, but the building had been ordered and was on site. And so the commission did what they called a conditional, uh, what did they call it? Conditional exception variance, which doesn't really even exist, but we made fun of that for a while on the planning commission because it was an interesting thing. They made an exception to allow a, a different size hangar. Well, shortly after that, there was a lot of discussion and it was the planning commission and the county council at the time deciding what the criteria was going to be. That was also reviewed by the airport board at the time. They said, okay, this is what the criteria is going to be. And they set specific criteria for the size and height and dimensions of the hangars. I personally have an issue with changing that again at this point when it was just changed two years ago. And there was a lot of discussion about it when it happened. I was part of that discussion, so I know what was discussed at the time. I think at this point, if, if they're going to lease from us, and I understand, you know, the aspect of saying, well, it's a little more lease revenue. Look, two hundred dollars a year isn't going to make or break the airport. It's just not. And if it does, we got bigger problems than that. So to me, it's not about the revenue. It's about keeping the airport, what the vision was at the time when, when that design criteria was put in place. And the vision was that we're going to have uniform sized hangars so that it's appealing to the eye and you don't have some that are out here and some that are up here and et cetera. That was the idea, that was the discussion. That's what the planning commission discussed. As I understand, that's what the airport advisory board discussed at the time. And that's what ultimately the council decided at the time. So I personally am not in favor of changing the dimensions for anybody. I think the dimensions are what they are. That's what we outlined. That's what it says in the code. I think we should stick with that.
So I don't think it's in the code. We'll have to go back and look. The height is in the code. I don't think the sixty by sixty size-
I think it is, but maybe I'm wrong and we can look at that and confirm.
And putting on the leases, so the height was for sure.
The height is absolutely part of it.
Yeah, it's a big part of it.
Yeah, and in fact, more than just the height, it even stipulates the wall height.
And the color.
And the, and the color and the, the pitch of the roof. It's very specific. And that was all discussed and approved by the airport advisory board, the planning commission and the county council at the time. So I, I think to change that at this point is not responsible. But that's my opinion and there's plenty of other folks up here that may have a differing opinion.
Would you even want to verify whether it's in the code or not, the sixty by sixty? Because it may only be on the-
I, I don't think that they can meet the, the height and the pitch requirements if they go larger, frankly.
So the pad size is not in the code. The wall height is a maximum fifteen outside. The building height is a maximum twenty seven. The minimum slope is four twelve.
That's the max, isn't it?
No, there's a minimum pitch.
Rule line showed me a maximum of four twelve pitch.
So if they go wider, they can shallow out that pitch?
They potentially could.
Yes, still make the twenty seven foot-
I, I still am not in favor.
They'd have a hard time moving the fourteen, the fifteen foot wall.
Yes, and staying under twenty seven feet high.
Wall, they'd have a hard time maybe.
With a shallower roof pitch?
Well, if they're fifteen there and they go more room, they, they should be okay, right?
Yes, yeah, I think they could.
Potentially.
Yeah.
I mean, the engineering might be difficult because snow load's going to be more.
It's just cost, that's not-
But, yeah, that's a cost to them, that's not to us. So anyway, end of, my, my thing is I'm not in favor of changing the size. I'd like them to stay uniform. Anybody else have comments on it?
I didn't, I didn't realize all this work went into it two years ago. I didn't know that until you literally just-
Well, it's been three and a half or four years ago.
Or three and a half or four, but, so I, I guess, yeah, I'm also curious on, um, if we had this much discussion and work set into it three or four years ago and, and now we're changing. It sounds like if, if we were to change, there would be just as much discussion and just as much input on whether we are or not. So I, yeah, I don't know. This is the first time I've heard it, so I don't know what to say more than that, but.
See, you're calling it a change and, and I don't, I don't think that's a legitimate description of it because the code, that isn't, we're not changing anything in the code.
Well, we may not be changing the code, but we're changing our leases, which are very specific to the sixty by sixty.
And my, my definition, sorry, my definition of change would be what was discussed three and a half to four years ago.
Yeah.
That's my definition of change, not to the actual code ordinance. I don't have the code ordinance in front of me, so I don't know what it says, but.
Yes, okay, I don't know if I was there for that discussion.
But you asked for our opinions, we're going to give you our opinions. We're not going to go back and forth on this. We got a lot more on our agenda that we need to get through. So anybody else have comments on it?
I guess my only comment would be that I, I think we should beautify the, the berm. I think that's important. If that agreement was made between the county, I think we need to keep our, our agreements. As far as airport goes, I, I think anyone that moved to the, by the airport knew there was an airport there. So, um, I don't have, I, I think if I wanted to live near an airport, I would have lived near an airport. And I, as long as that meets all the requirements of planes going in and out of there, it meets the requirements. So as far as the building size goes and, and my, myself, I, if, I'm indifferent to that. So I, I would want what I wanted if I'm spending the money down there. So that's how I feel about it.
I would add that even in the leases, we modified the lease to say as approved by the county commission, so.
So it does say unless approved otherwise by the county commission, the original lease did say sixty by sixty. That was added in.
And that was just changed, right?
Just barely. And you did say that'll come up later, but you didn't tell us why we added it in at the time.
Didn't have?
Nope.
I feel like it was added and just-
No, you said, you said, we'll get to that at some point later. I do remember that specifically because I'm like, oh, well, why are we adding that in?
Maybe that was in my, my briefing that I talked to later in the briefing.
No, no, you said it at a later meeting.
Okay.
So.
So my view is that we should take care of the berm. It's been a nice war for a long time and it, it ought to be improved. And frankly, if there are fire district funds that we can use, that's great. If we need to supplement them or bring it out of the general fund, then we ought to do that. That's something I would do. With respect to the size of the hangars, um, I don't view that as a modification of our code. The, the two hangar locations that they're talking about are at the end of a, a row and that road kind of bends around it. And aesthetically, I don't think you're going to see much of a difference. They are clearly bigger. They're not going to be taller. They're going to be the same green and white format, but in terms of, of view obstruction, it's not going to make a significant difference. You're going to see the hangar or you're going to see, depending on as you drive by or if you live across the street, you're going to see that corner extended somewhat. So from, from my perspective, that's not a big deal and I would be in support of doing that. But I'm, I'm one, just like you're one. And then with respect to the safety arguments, I'm, I'm not typically persuaded by incremental increases in traffic with respect to vehicle traffic or aircraft traffic. Particularly unless there's some expert report indicating that there is some additional danger created by the increased number of flights in and out of the airport. I've lived next to the airport now for eleven or twelve years and, and I have not noticed a material increase in air traffic at the airport over the course of time. It seems to me to be, mothers may, I'm not here all day long, you know? But on Saturdays, it's pretty active. Not as much this time of year, but spring through fall, it's pretty active. And then on summer evenings, it will, you'll get more traffic in and out. But a lot of these individuals have multiple aircraft and they can only fly one at a time, you know? So if you've got one in the air and three in the hangar, it, it's, it's not that big of an increase. On the other hand, there are subleases and sometimes, you know, multiple guys will go out. There's a group that goes out, I, as far as I can tell, every Saturday morning. Not always sure when they leave, but I generally hear them come back because of the way they fly the pattern to come back and make their turns and land in sequence. I think that's cool, but-
And they do all their acrobats over my house.
That's right.
Yeah. So, so I, I understand the general public safety argument. Anytime you have aircraft flying over and above anywhere and they lose power and they go down, you have a potential risk. And, you know, that, that's true in our air landing and takeoff zones, just like it is at every other airport, so. Do you know-
You don't have to have a hangar there to land an airplane there.
No, anybody can come and land the aircraft there. They can use our tie downs, they can do all of that sort of thing. Do you know, is there any number of aircraft at the airport that will trigger a requirement for it to be more regulated in terms of like a, a tower or anything like that? I know, I mean, the last time I flew out of a private airplane out of Provo, there was no tower at the time that we, we took off. I think they have one at different operational hours, but we're not anywhere close to that, are we?
No, because we're in class G airspace. So that's what they, you know, classes us to be. G is basically, we call G go for. You know, you're, you're out there by yourself, you're talking, you're looking. And it's a B F R airport, so it's a visual flight rule.
Okay. Michelle's right. There, there was, it's the advisory board. Yeah, the, the airport, the increased hangar size cannot extend into a utility easement and we need to verify that. And we're not, I don't think we're making a motion to approve increased hangar sizes for the two hangars tonight. So that's something that needs to be looked at. But you want a general direction, I think you've heard from everybody as to what their general view is, so.
No confirmation either way is the way I think your input. Okay.
Well, it looks like it was about divided.
You're right, exactly.
Okay. You had a couple of other items here that you wanted to address?
I do. Looks like Joe wants to talk about the U S Forest Service subleasing the building from Brant's F B O after a recent phone call today.
Yeah, so the Forest Service, they want to be here for another three years. They told me today that they cannot sublease from anyone that's not the owner of the property. So that kind of conflicts with what we're trying to do with Brant. That's still, you guys still have, it's up in front of you of whether to keep the lease or extend the lease with the Forest Service or go with Brant.
It sounds like, though, we could potentially keep the lease with the Forest Service and do a sublease for a portion of that structure with Brant, right? Not a sublease, but a secondary lease?
Yeah, not the same area. And so that's something that we discussed earlier today, um, is potentially, is there a win-win situation where Brant could still have a portion of what he wanted to do without leasing the whole building? And then the Forest Service could still be in there and kind of double up until, for the three years.
And with further discussion with Brant today, he said he could, he could go another three years without, you know, being in the building as long as he could do with F B O services. Continue with that.
It sounds like there's already a good option in place or good potential option.
And I hadn't spoken with Brant yet. I was going to try and call Robert, but was on the phone with others, so.
So on that F B, the F B O portion, uh, or the fuel portion of that, is it going to be a mobile unit or a stationary?
He wants to do a stationary unit, so it'll be-
So he'll be doing it right on that area where the Forest Service is at now or where would he be doing it?
We have, we, we have a potential fuel station where the two gliders are on- We haven't, we, we have a potential fuel station where the two gliders are on the tie downs on the end towards the runway. That's, we've already run the conduit to there, so we're not gonna have to grip up any asphalt. You know, it seemed to be a consensus that that's about where to put it. But he could put it over there where the Forest Service is easily. If we, we would just have to pay the, or he would have to pay the, you know, actuate over there.
I like that. Were you, were mentioning it'd be more universal?
I think we have that spot where the two glider tie downs is, and that's gonna be our best spot. And it's gonna be a two-tank system, correct cargo year, all self-contained, real easy. Basically a turnkey.
Is it underground tanks or above-ground tank?
It'll be above-ground.
Above-ground.
Above-ground, double wall. It meets all the aviation, meets all the rules, you know, stuff. We do them all the time. So it's a, it's a credit company that comes in, lives all the work, meets, meets all that, you know, decals or whatever, all that stuff. So that's what he's planning on doing, not far from that.
No, that's why I was curious.
Anything else, Joe?
No, the leases are, we gotta deal with the leases too. That's the next one.
Next one.
You know, one other option, I think we could consider assuming that last agreement we did doesn't prohibit us from doing this. I think Brant's willing to buy that. We could do a ground lease for that building area, sell him the building, and then they would be subleasing from the owner. Then he's got the maintenance obligations going forward. With respect to that building, we don't as the landlord of that building. That's, that's another thing we might want to think about. Ground leasing them the space under the building, selling them the actual structure, thereby generating revenue to complete the berm. That's just another possibility to think about. We just need to make sure, we had that agreement for the grant for the last restoration funds, and we just need to make sure there's not a provision in there that prohibits us from selling airport property in what it specifically says.
Okay, I did want to mention before we move on, that Nine Line's plan is developing very fast. They hope to present it in two weeks. And we are going to review their plan as a airport advisory board on Thursday, because they're asking for a letter of recommendation from us. So we want to be able to see their plans and provide some sort of recommendation for, for when they present. Okay, I believe that includes, that includes my section of the agenda request. If there's no questions, perhaps we should move on to the leases, which is very much related to what we're here for anyway. And I think those should be on hand. So, you know, if now is a good time to, to sign them, I think that would be great for accomplishing one more thing.
So this item has the, I included on the agenda request each of the hangar spaces. These are all on the standard form that we previously approved. The hangar sizes for, I'm, I'm asking this, not stating it, for EE4 and FFE are stated as sixty by sixty in those leases?
No, I think we have that changed that we talked about that allows them, that allows you to decide on a bigger size.
Well, but that, that language was unless approved by the county commission, they would be limited to the sixty by sixty size?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, I don't want it to say seventy by sixty or eighty by sixty because that hasn't been approved. So other than that, I, the, the leases, it's just, and we've received all of the deposits from each of them. They've signed their lease agreements, so we've typically approved each of those lease agreements separately. I've just included them here as a group, giving you the names of the individuals and the applicable pad sites.
So we now receive the Fossen lease, I'm assuming? I thought we had.
He's using a, a company name, but I'm not sure.
Drassel Investments?
Drassel or something.
Drassel.
Oh, okay.
So there's three of them that are using company entities.
And there are only eleven listed on the airport leases received by clerk auditor's office. I have the twelfth one from David and Linda Hughes. The reason it came to me is because they, they changed the form. They typed everything in rather than handwriting it. And so I did a, a word-by-word review, and it's the same other than that, so.
So I show thirteen listed on this list.
On the second, on the second page, do you see that where it has, so after the agenda request, on the second page, I only, let's see.
Thirteen.
I think thirteen, eight, nine, ten, eleven. So I only see eleven on the spreadsheet.
There was one added today, I think it was.
Okay, so you have the one added, and I've got the thirteen, so.
This is John Durica?
Okay.
And, and that's indicating that they received the funds.
So I do have a report from Zach saying that they have received three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
So the funds have come in from all of them. Okay, so are we approving just these eleven on this list? Are we approving twelve?
It would be all, it would be all thirteen, because one more was received today by the clerk, and then I have the thirteen. And so I think they've already been approved. I think they just need to be signed.
Okay. Well, we haven't approved the individual leases. We've approved the.
The form, I guess.
The form. We just need to approve the individual agreements with each one.
And how can we approve that one that wants to do bigger buildings?
We're not approving, we're just approving it at the sixty by sixty.
Okay, that sounds good.
So I think what we would do is just read through this list and say we're approving the lease or this pad with this individual or, or company entity.
Are you ready?
Absolutely. I'll take a motion when you're ready.
Make a motion that we approve the leases for the following individuals: Aimon Guns, Family Trust, Lynn D. Alley, JAS Real Estate, Joshua C. Bonds, C. Wheeler R.D. LLC, D.D. Cooper Properties, Drassel Investments, Clint Menke, John Millam, Derek Stanbridge, David Wolfe. David and Linda Hughes.
And the one you have.
Oh, the one I have is.
John Durica.
John Durica and Elizabeth Brinkley.
I don't know how to say her last name.
Say that again.
I don't know how to say her last name.
No, just tell me their names.
John Durica.
John Zeke Durica.
John Zeke Durica.
And Elizabeth Brinkley U.
And Elizabeth Brinkley U.
Okay, we have a motion to approve thirteen leases for airport hangars.
Ah, second.
A motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Fackrell. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
So when those are signed, shall I and Jared be the ones to get those back to the individuals?
Well, if you, if you could bring them to my office or the clerk's office, so we scan them, then we can send out a digital copy and we'll retain the originals.
I'm assuming we have the paper copies of all of them here. Okay, so I'll go through and sign them all, and then I'll give them back to.
May I ask who witnesses? Is that me or someone else?
You can witness. Okay, item number six, CED Board discussion, decision on overview of business grant, business grant application process using rural grant funds. Commissioner Fackrell?
This was part of the CED Board application that they made for our rural grant, Part A. And part of that, of the two hundred thousand that we received, was a business grant for thirty thousand dollars that is to be given to certain businesses that are gonna improve. They're not to be, to bail out a business like the CARES funds were. This one here is to actually give some improvement and growth. And so the decision was is to go with the thirty thousand that they had requested. And the maximum a, a business can receive is ten thousand dollars. However, the process in which they are going to receive this is they have to go to, to Andrew Willis, who is the BRC's Business Resource Guru, and he.
So the BRG, then?
BRC.
Well, you said guru, I'm sorry.
Yeah, BRC guru. And he is, they have to go to him to even fill out the application. And he will then be able to help determine whether or not they're eligible or not eligible, and whether or not it will actually increase business here in Morgan County by giving them whatever grant it is.
So how many grants have we given previously, Blaine? Because I know we have given.
In prior years?
In, in the last two years from the COVID funds and CARES Act.
I have no clue before we got here.
So we gave, we gave out about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in small business grants from COVID, uh, CARES Act funding. That was in twenty twenty.
Yeah, it was twenty twenty.
Previously, there was a, a grant program administered by the state called, what was the Bear Grant Program? Business Expansion and Retention is what Bear stands for. And so businesses could apply to the state program and, and receive grant funding through that program. That, that whole program was sunsetted, and instead, they changed, and now we have the Rural Grant Program, which is the funding that we use, the two hundred thousand dollars that we received. We use that to help pay for, well, some BRC costs. We use it to pay for our economic development contractor. When we did the grant for the twenty twenty-two, I guess it's twenty-two fiscal year. We set aside in that funding as part of that two hundred thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars to be used for small business grants. And the idea from the CED Board was that we are, because they retired the Bear Grant Program, this was the county's replacement of it. Some counties use a big portion of their rural grant funding for business grants. Others don't use any. We're not required to do a portion for small business grants, but that was what was set aside. It was thirty thousand of the two hundred thousand to potentially do, uh, small business grants.
Well, you say we're not required, but yet that's how we submitted it.
That is how we submitted it, yes. Now, the state doesn't say, well, if you don't do grants out of this, we're not gonna give you the funding, but that's how we submitted it. We said, we're going to spend X amount on a, on a contractor for economic development. We're going to provide X amount to the Chamber of Commerce. We're gonna provide X amount to the C, or, to Andrew's group. The Small Business Resource Center, and thirty thousand we set aside for small business grants. So what this is, is basically, we asked Andrew, who has some experience in this, and James to work together and come up with a good process for how these grants would be applied for and what would be eligible, and, and how that process would look.
I just want, I, I just know I had some people approach me saying, it didn't feel like a, felt like some people got a lot of money, and.
That was under the CARES, yes. Under this one, I agree, there's gonna be.
I just wondered if you were gonna, if they were gonna make it a little more.
Yes.
I don't know.
Encompassing?
Yeah, inclusive.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of requirements, and you guys read it in the packet as to the requirements that they need or need to, need to come fulfill. And, and Jared was asking me today, how many businesses we have in this county? There's over thirteen hundred businesses, including small businesses. I mean, that includes all businesses. How many of them?
Will apply or?
Yeah, how many will apply? You know that, and Young, Young over there Auto Group says, we're not gonna apply. Ten thousand dollars will do us no good.
Well, they don't meet the criteria.
Yeah, they don't meet the criteria too, but there's a lot of them that, you know, this is designed for smaller businesses, such as SOS, that might need, or something similar to that, that might need an additional boost to help just get them over the edge. But they have to be a profitable business. They can't be a, a business that's not making a profit. And so this business grant was designed to help those individuals. Now, some businesses, three thousand dollars will help them. Some businesses might be five thousand, but they have to meet the criteria. One of the criteria is they have to sit down with Andrew Willis and go through everything. They are not just gonna fill out the application.
And submit it.
And submit it. They're actually gonna be sitting down with him before, as they fill it out. And if it doesn't meet criteria, he's gonna tell them right off the bat.
No, I think that's a great idea. I, I like how you're doing it this way, because it, it did seem a little weird last time, so.
Yeah.
Okay. That was my question.
So I, I will note, though, when you talk about the CARES Act funding, this is much the same process. So the CARES Act funding, it was advertised that you could apply for it, and there was criteria set out, and there was an application process. They went through the application. They submitted that information. It went to the CED Board. CED Board reviewed it. There was at least five members of the CED Board that reviewed every application, and then they made a recommendation to the county council, who then approved those funds. So the overall process is much the same. The only real difference that I can gather is that Andrew would be involved a little more.
He's gonna be, he's gonna be involved from, from the start to the finish.
I, I will note that with the CARES Act grants, grant, grant applications and, and awarding grants is a difficult process. It's difficult because there are a lot of factors involved. If you're comparing a business that does, you know, X to a business that does Y, they don't, they're not apples to apples. They're hard to compare. And as far as the CARES Act funding, if, if there are businesses that felt like that wasn't a fair process, every business that applied, to my knowledge, except one, received grant funding. And we had that process, we had that application pool open for a month initially, and we felt like we didn't have enough applicants. So we, we kept it open for over three months. We kept extending the deadline, trying to get it out there. We put it in the paper multiple times. We sent it out through the chamber multiple times. The Small Business Center was, was pushing on it. So I guess what I'm saying is, if there are those that feel like that was not done well, I, I take a little bit of issue in that, in that it was put out there, definitely, and everybody who applied, again, except one, received grant funding. So if there are people who don't feel like that was accurate, I, I hope they apply for this grant funding because they ought to.
Yeah, and I mean, even in the application, you guys read this, they must show, I mean, they've had to be in business for at least two years. They've had to have profitable years. They have to show an impact on job creation, retention, workforce training, and business growth. They have to come up with a plan as to how they're gonna accomplish it, and, you know, there's, they're not gonna get them out of debt. They're not gonna have the money go towards an order salary. It's going to be, I mean, they've got to hit some, some, I mean, and they have to have it completed. Everything has to be completed by June. Okay, I mean, it has to be expended by the end, by the end of June.
So I'm in support of this. I have a question. So just before "Apply," it's on page forty-eight of sixty-seven, and I, so the paragraph above "Apply" says, "Funding exclusions include organizations that deny service, membership, or other involvement on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, national origin, ancestry, citizenship, veteran, or disability status." I agree with the sentence, organizations should not deny service. Organizations should not deny service, membership, or other involvement on that basis. But then if you look down in, in Apply, number two, this, it says, "The business is majority owned by a legal U.S. resident who identifies as one or more of the following: Asian Indian, Asian Pacific, Black, Latino, Native American, or Alaskan Native, Arab, or Middle Eastern, Native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander, LGBTQ plus, or as a person with a disability." All people who I believe should be eligible for the grant. But why is it a requirement that we exclude those that do not fall within those categories?
In the, this was the first one we sent out. And in that, this was information that Grant, he forgot to take out. This was what he used to help develop his. The one I sent to you today is the revised one that goes right up to, um, there's only basically three pages. It says, interested bus- business owners should contact Carol or Andrew to set up an appointment. And the rest of it is, is just was worksheets. That's all it was. And so everything above that is what we're approving, nothing below that.
But-
So you're getting rid of that whole-
Yeah, that whole section.
Are you sure they're not going to have that in it at all?
I'm positive.
Okay, alright.
So it's, huh, it's in the packet. The one I sent to you today has the complete form, which is everything above Andrew Willis's phone number.
Yeah, the, the section about Apply isn't even on the one that you sent today.
Because, I mean, in this one, it says, our local community grants are awarded through-
So it ends with-
Sam's Club and Walmart.
Post a while.
We're not doing that. These were things that he gathered to put into the, into the thing.
Okay. Alright, I just didn't, I didn't understand why we didn't want to discriminate and then we were going to.
And then if you, right.
It looks like it doesn't even say anything about discrimination.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything in there.
So can I make a comment? I'm, I'm all for um money for small businesses, any way we can get it. I'm all for it. Um, there's thirteen, approximately thirteen hundred small businesses in the county. Even if ten of those small businesses, and that's it, applied for thirty thousand dollars, that's three thousand dollars each. Um, as I was reading through these, I don't know if you want to call them requirements or application requirements or whatever they need to be doing and, and the back and forth of who's making sure they're doing it or not, um, on both sides, the business owner and then on the review side, that could very well cost up to um a thousand or two thousand dollars of time just to get that all completed correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's a concern I have.
Well, that cons- that is coming out of Andrew's own, I mean, the pay that he receives from the BRC. And he states that in here, that his-
I think Commissioner Anderson was talking about the-
The applicant's efforts.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I did, it's just a very, it's, it's a long list of items that hopefully they do and maybe they don't, maybe they do, and maybe that goes back and forth five different times of whether they qualify or not-
Right.
For three thousand dollars.
Right, and so basically, let me try to explain it. He, his main goal with this whole thing is to try to get businesses to be successful. And so if he can have that input by helping them in their business, that is one of the main goals. It's not costing us. That portion is not. His time is not costing us.
That's not what I'm saying, the business owner. So my, I guess the thought process I have is possibly not make it, there's be so many requirements.
Getting a grand.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't even have a business. If I had one, I wouldn't, I wouldn't apply for it. It'd, it'd take too much of my time-
Right.
To make sure everything is done correctly for three thousand dollars.
I would be surprised if ten businesses apply for this, to be honest.
What's that?
You, you don't even think ten will apply?
We had a total, I believe it was seventeen that applied for CARES Act funding.
Okay.
And we set aside, basically, as much as people would apply for, we were willing to, to allocate to it.
If it's a small business, I guess the thought is, is to make the requirements a lot easier for them to, to apply and comply, to be able to just move forward with it. But I, I'm reading through them and some of them don't make sense to me all the way. I have a lot of questions if I was applying.
Right. And, and I would have that same kind of a issue in applying. Um, you know, how much is it going to cost? But the other, my aspect is, is, you know, it might be something that could help. I mean, let's just take, for instance, I'm going to use SOS, just because it's off the top of my mind. Um, SOS, maybe what they need is a little bit of marketing within this county to let people know that they serve pizzas and they're darn good pizzas, or to let them know that they produce great water, you know, waters tasting, or they've got the shipwreck, or whatever it is that Jared loves all the time.
You're correct.
Um, okay, because I don't know. But, but I sure love their pizzas, but it would be nice to be able to market. And so some of these businesses might just need an upper hand with a little bit of marketing help. And that's just whether or not it's, you know, the, I'm just giving you an example. I don't know.
No, I th- I think, I think having a meet with Willis is, is that his name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the, oh, right, good way to go.
Make it an easy-
And I have worked with Andrew. I, I was just going to say, I have worked with Andrew and I think part of the, the experience or the benefit isn't necessarily the grant funds, but his knowledge and expertise on helping a business owner, because he, he does help a lot of business owners be successful just by interacting with them. So even if it is a cost to them, maybe that's what they need.
Right. Do we need to hear from the CED Board?
We're ready for a motion, I think.
Yeah.
Are you ready for a motion?
Is there anything extra I need to add from you guys? Okay, I move that we approve the, the business grant application using the rural grant funds of up to thirty thousand dollars from the BRC.
Based on the form circulated this afternoon?
Yes, based on the form circulated this afternoon.
I'll second.
Not the one in the packet.
Okay, we have a motion uh by Commissioner Fackrell and a second by Commissioner McConnell to approve the form uh that was circulated this afternoon for small business grant application and process, um, funding to come from the state rural grant funding, uh, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, uh, item number six, Commissioner Fackrell.
Yeah, this one, um, I, in December, we had talked about as a commission and the chamber to bring the DMO under the chamber. However, we're not completely ready for this. Um, we did send out, or I did send out, Garrett sent it out, a approval, um, or not an approval, an agreement potential with the chamber. But I think we need to work on it a little bit more. And so I want to postpone the main part, but I would like to just kind of discuss what you guys' feelings are on it, see what we need to do.
So I mentioned this to you earlier. I'm wondering, based on our, on our procurement discussions we've had, if, rather than just executing an agreement with the chamber, what we're really looking here for is, is DMO support. Uh, whether we potentially need to do an RFP and let the chamber bid on that rather than just executing it with them. But I don't know if that's necessary or not. That could allow us to, there could be other contractors come in and say, we're willing to do it and this is what we would suggest, the chamber being one of them.
I did review, I did review the December twenty-first meeting today just to kind of refresh and make sure that I was putting the accurate things in. And at the time, um, the commission had decided that under, I think it's subsection B seven of the procurement, that if there's a single source, there's not a, I can pull up the code, but if there's not a reasonably, a reasonable alternative, and I, I believe it might have been you at the time, you said, um, if there were multiple chambers that could offer the same support, then maybe we'd have to RFP because they, there's reasonable alternatives. But because we're looking at tapping into the chamber, which really gives us the whole chamber, it's not just one entity or individual. And so we thought that that was an exception under the requirement to go out to bid. But if you want, I can-
Good, I mean, if, if, if the objective is that we're doing, you know, we're, we're set on doing a Chamber Bureau, then we would be good probably to go that round.
And I think the issue is-
If we're more concerned with the, with the DMO only, then I think we ought to probably go the other route and do a, an RFP.
Yeah, and the Chamber Bureau is not set up yet. I did talk with Tracee this afternoon and I, I'm sure Blaine probably did too. But um, the entity is still being formed and so it's a little premature to enter that agreement at this point, but they are interested in continuing that discussion.
So basically, we need to postpone it for two weeks till our next meeting. But I, I would like some more information.
We have a motion to postpone item number six till our next meeting on February, is it the second?
First.
February first.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner McConnell, a second from Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'm happy to discuss it further, but I want to read the form of agreement.
Okay.
Some thoughts about it.
That'd be great. I'd appreciate it a whole bunch.
Okay, um, Commissioners Fackrell and Wilson, discussion decision of HBME uh for county audit for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I guess me again. Um, HBME is the one that did our audit last year and they have sent us the form. Uh, actually, they sent it to Robert and uh he forwarded it on to me. And we are, um, they would like to continue on with our audit for this year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. And so we have the, uh, which basically to help you understand, last time we did the financial accountants that are going to prepare everything, then they're going to turn it over to this HBME to do the audit, the actual audit. And the goal is to hopefully have it done by June first. No, September thirtieth.
So is this anything different than what we've done in years past?
Nope.
And it's-
We've used HBME for three years, I believe, now, so.
Right. This is at least the third, it could be the fourth.
Yeah.
Did they reach the, the out-of-pocket max or whatever they call it, the threshold last year?
Yeah, plus. Plus. I think it ended at about thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars more.
Hopefully, we are getting to the point where that happened.
Says that, that the, the max it could go is to twenty-two.
Not to exceed.
It's a not-to-exceed contract. How do they exceed it?
I don't know. That was under a former agreement.
It's because it wasn't just the audit that we had them do. We had them do some other stuff, as I recall.
Yeah, that's right. We had them do some other things. Remember, we had them do those other audits.
Problem because we had our, our former accounting folks who didn't perform like they should have and provide the correct documentation. And so the auditor ended up guiding them through a lot of that.
That's right.
Which ended up being a lot of extra cost. But yes, this-
So it shouldn't this year, then?
I think we're getting in a better position.
Okay.
Cool.
It certainly has taken a few years. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve HBME to audit the county's financial statements for fiscal year twenty twenty-one on the full pursuit to the letter agreement included in our packet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve um the letter of engagement with HBME for the county's twenty twenty-one audit by Commissioner, Commissioner Connell and a second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, on to our second to last item here. Public hearing, proposed amendment to Morgan County Code, Section eight dash six dash fifteen G, Home Occupation Category Three classifications, amending the review and approval process. We'll start with the staff presentation, then we'll adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
Okay, this is pretty straightforward. I'm going to keep it short and simple. Right now, in our county code, Class Three Home Occupation, which basically is, uh, the parking of commercial vehicles outside of, of residence requires that that approval go to the Planning Commission for approval. Um, and we've had a couple of instances recently where someone's just parking, um, you know, for one ton pickup and then twenty-six, thirty-foot trailer, they're using it for shipping and hauling. It comes in, it, it had minimal impact. The location was such that it was, um, you know, there's no adjacent properties very close, at least, I don't know, quarter mile away, something like that. Yet this person had to submit a conditional use permit application and wait until we went to the Planning Commission before they could get their business license approved. Uh, it seemed extraneous for the Planning Commission to look at that. We've tried to write the code and the Planning Commission recommends approval of the way we've written it, but um, it is, tried to be written in a way so that the zoning administrator can make the call. And then, uh, based on some criteria, we, we didn't go into a lot of details a little bit hard, but the potential adverse impacts to the county, uh, would be the key phrase there. And um, and if the zoning administrator feels that it's, you know, hey, this is a little bit questionable or gray, they can elevate it to the Planning Commission. But uh, in, the most, couple of most recent cases, it's been uh pretty open and shut and it's just, it's adding four weeks on to someone getting their business license, so.
And is, is, is it been because of complaints from neighbors or is it just-
No, just they, they come in and they get a business license. Where are you doing your business at? What are you doing? Well, you gotta get your zoning compliance first. And that, and we look at and go, well, technically that triggers a Class Three Home Occupation.
And this still has a provision for you to kick it to the Planning Commission should you feel like you don't want to make that call.
That's correct. Well, you know, it, it, and you can, it is a case-by-case basis in the sense that, again, and, and I can pull up the map and show you, but uh, this is off of, uh, off Started Road, you know, it's, it's the back of, off of Started Road, uh, I can't, uh, Fish Hatchery Road. Down there, a couple houses, it's the last house. Then you go quite a bit further before there's another home. And he's parking a large trailer on the side of his house. Well, I mean, if it was his RV, we wouldn't have anything to say about it. But because it's a business, and we got to be careful because we don't want commercial activities encroaching. But hopefully the code, the way it's written, allows us that flexibility. We can look at it and that is the point of the conditional use permit. We can look at issues. Is there an issue? What mitigation can we do? If there is any required, then we can handle it as that, well, we don't need to necessarily kick it out.
Makes common sense to me. Okay, any questions, any more questions for staff?
Yeah, I don't, this is a really bad question, but I got to ask it. Are you the zoning administrator?
Yes.
And that's official title?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, I want to make sure we're not naming a title that we don't have.
Now, I'm not so sure.
So if you do the conditional use permit review, will you still conduct a public hearing?
Uh, it would never do a public meeting um for a conditional use. Um, no, I don't, I don't think the code requires that for, I have to look.
According to this, it says that if you are, if you're the zoning administrator, you can do it without going to the public, to a meeting.
Or, well, it, without sending it to the Planning Commission for the meeting. In other jurisdictions, when I've had zoning administrator review of conditional use permits, they still conduct a public hearing, but it's just conducted by the planning and staff administratively or at that level as opposed to before a planning commission.
And, and my predecessors have done that. I'm, uh, on, time to time, uh, where they've actually sat down and the zoning administrator held a hearing. I have never done that. Um, I'm trying to think of the public notice requirement, a specific land use application. I'd have to look here at that.
That's something you can probably look up offline.
I mean, you, you say full conditional use review. If, if it's required by the state code, then you would do it.
Correct. Yeah, that's true. No, you're nineteen years. So that's in regard to telecommunications.
So then the other question I had about the language is, so you're reviewing conditions necessary for protection of adjacent properties in the public- so you're reviewing conditions necessary for protection of adjacent properties in the public health, safety, and welfare. Is that intended to be articulating the provisions for conditional use permit review generally?
Yes.
So generally, under the state code, you impose conditions to mitigate reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. So I'm just wondering if that, we should use that language instead of this just more general language.
Where are you at, Robert?
Well, it's in Category Three Classification. He says, he's going to determine if the use is appropriate and to impose requirements and conditions necessary for the protection of adjacent properties and the public health, safety, and welfare. It's probably getting at the same thing, but under the state code, what you review for conditional use permits is reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. And you impose conditions to mitigate those reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. So for example, it says that if the use is appropriate. Well, if you've identified a conditional use as an allowed use in a zone, it's appropriate, unless there's reasonably anticipated detrimental effects that you can't mitigate by the imposition of a condition. So.
And, and where that would, the appropriate would kick in is, is it a conditional use permit? We can get applications for whatever.
Right, but this says, category three classification, conditional use permit required. So any Class Three application for a home occupancy permit is going to require a conditional use permit and throw you into those standards under the state statute. And so all I'm suggesting is that our code language utilize the language from the statutory provision.
I would think that makes sense.
Sounds like we got a motion in the making. Oh, we got to go to a public hearing. Any other comments before we move into the public hearing? Thank you.
I move that we go into public hearing.
Okay, we have a mo- motion to move into public hearing.
Second.
By Commissioner Fackrell, and a second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing for item number, or item F. Proposed amendment to Morgan County Code, Section eight dash six dash fifteen G, Home Occupation, Category Three Classifications. Okay, seeing no public hearing comment, I'll look for a motion to move out of public hearing and reconvene our public meeting.
I move that we go out of public hearing. If that's the proper way to say it.
And reconvene public meetings, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell, a second by Commissioner Anderson. Go out of the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, do you have a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the revision of Morgan County Code, Section eight dash six dash fifteen, to amend the review and approval process for Category Two and Three Home Occupations based on the text listed in the staff report dated January eighteenth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, with the revision from Brother McConnell.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Anderson to approve, uh, the revisions to Morgan County Code, Section eight dash six dash fifteen G, Home Occupation, Category Three Classifications, as listed in the packet and with the amendments noted by Commissioner McConnell. All those in favor?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Fackrell, we'll start with you.
At this point, I'm just tired.
He's just happy to be alive.
I am very happy to be alive.
And you're still going to have an hour plus of oxygen.
Approximately.
Commissioner McConnell.
So I've gotten a couple of different notices with respect to the timing of the posting of our agendas and packet materials. So let's try to make sure that that happens, posted on both the Morgan County website and on the Utah Public Notice website?
Yeah, I think the issue was getting posted on the, uh, the Public Notice website, but I think on the county website, there was an issue with it.
Right, and I talked to. Yeah, and I talked to.
Okay.
Them on that today.
And I know sometimes, I suspect everyone has violated this on the commission at, at one time or another. It would be great if we have our packet materials in by Thursday, and, and that they are included in the packet, as opposed to, like, I know we received some today, and if you send them to me after I'm already driving from Salt Lake, I'm not going to get them before I get to the meeting.
I understand that.
Yeah, I think that's a good reminder.
Right.
Okay, I don't have any comments. Commissioner Anderson?
No, just, uh, rec board, we're working with an agreement with the school, been working with, uh, county attorney, and we're getting through that process to get, get a new update on, um, and, and the basis of it would be just the use of school facilities, Rexplex, um, their, their basketball facilities, and how that's paid for.
Commissioner Wilson? Look for a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner McConnell, and a second by Commissioner Fackrell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.